Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Gore and I'm Chair of ANC 34G. As we start tonight's meeting, I want to welcome everyone for coming and thank you for participating. I'm definitely glad you're here with us. We have a good agenda tonight. As your Chair, I'm going to work to create a meeting environment where every Commissioner and member of our community is safe, respected, heard, valued, and seen. So with that, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:32 and start with Commissioner introductions, going from my view on the screen, left to right, and starting with Commissioner Nagy.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our ANC meeting. I'm Liz Nagy, I'm Commissioner in SMD 07, which is military, south to Chevy Chase Parkway, west to Rena Road, and east over to Nevada.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Gore and I'm the Commissioner for 34G 01, which is all of Hawthorne, portions of Barnaby Wood, so pretty much Pinehurst Circle, down Tennyson, on back around towards the Tributary, and back up towards Beach, and all of western down towards Oregon. Thanks for coming tonight. Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah, I'm Peter Goslin. I represent District 6, which is largely the west side of Connecticut, back to Friendship Heights with the peninsula to the east running to Nevada, a peninsula that's suffering tonight because DC Water has dug a hole in the Military Road and left plates that are loose, and so you may hear in the background of this meeting those plates bumping. Thanks.
Commissioner Simmons?
Hi, Commissioner Simmons. I have the east side of Connecticut from the Gation to Western, all the way back to Broad Branch, the divider for Ward 3 and 4.
Commissioner Finacy?
Hi, my name is Laura Finacy. I have SMD 04, which is roughly between Utah and Broad Branch, Western and McKinley, including Lafayette Elementary School and Lafayette Pointe Park. Thank you.
And Commissioner Sherman?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bruce Sherman, Commissioner in 02, which is in the southeastern part of our ANC district, bordered by military on the south, Oregon on the east, Utah on the west, Tennyson on the north, but the district that I represent also protrudes north from Tennyson to Chatsworth, Unicorn Lane, and Oregon Knolls. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Grunwald? You're on mute, Commissioner Grunwald.
Carol Grunwald, SMD 03, which is bordered by Utah Avenue to the northeast, 27th Street to the east, Broad Branch to the south and to the west, McKinley on the north, and it talks north and east along Nebraska, where my boundary rejoins Utah Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Announcement of meeting procedures. So the ANC's meeting procedures as provided for in our agenda, at the end of that agenda and established by our bylaws and outlined in Robert's Rules of Order, helps us to maintain efficient conduct of our Commission business. Per those procedures, all attendees must stay muted unless recognized by the Chair to speak. Meetings will follow the agenda and list at times. The Chair may modify these as needed. Typical meeting links, we aim for hour and 45 minutes in keeping with the reasonable citizen time commitment and community center schedule. We are virtual, thus that is going to be flexible and this time may change. Commissioner introductions and community agency announcements are one minute each. Speakers must stay within allotted time. We also accept email and written comments. During agenda items, residents will speak first, followed by Commissioner briefs. Commissioner briefs, three minutes with an optional two-minute follow-up. Resident briefs, three minutes with an optional two-minute follow-up. Each resident is heard once before another speaks twice. And ad hoc resident comments during our 15-minute open session, we'll ask that community members speak for a minute with an additional optional one-minute follow-up. With that, Commissioners, is there any changes to the agenda? Commissioner Goslin? You're on mute.
I asked for two changes. One, one minute to speak on an issue concerning the Commissioner Sherman and I talked about today. And secondly, I'd like to add to the agenda a discussion and possible vote on a resolution that I've circulated among Commissioners and that's posted on the website concerning the removal of the Newlands Wayside Exhibit next to the Chevy Chase Circle and Fountain.
And Commissioner Goslin, how much time do you need for that agenda item?
I think that we have, I think we have pretty much broad consensus about the Fountain, the Wayside Exhibit, and so I think we can do this in five to eight minutes. If we can't, I guess I can withdraw it and put her off until another time, but I hope we could do this quickly. Quickly, and therefore I'd suggest putting it relatively high in the agenda. You'll notice that it, the issue is now being talked about on the listserv, and so it's an issue that's come up, it's coming up among residents. Thanks.
Okay, I'll put it down for eight minutes. Commissioner Grunwald?
Yes, this is not about this, tonight's particular, particularly about this agenda tonight, but I would like to make another request that we, with our agendas, that we we place the items that are attracting a large number of constituents, place them earlier in the evening instead of later in the evening. I see that we have a discussion on race first before we have discussion on the omnibus zoning, and I think there are a lot of constituents who are here to talk about zoning, and I would just like to, in the future, be cognizant of how many constituents we think might attend a meeting and put those items earlier. Thank you.
Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, we still have on the agenda, Commissioner Sherman, the Goods for Good Grant. I thought we were taking that off.
Oh, you're right. Sorry. Yes, indeed. We are taking that off. Yes.
All right. So with that, Commissioner Goslin, we want to move your Newlands Wayside Exhibit Resolution in that position?
That would be fine.
Commissioner Nagy?
I just wanted to ask, please, thank you. Commissioner Goslin said there were two agenda changes, and one was the issue of the Wayside sign. What was the other one?
I want to make a statement regarding our October 6 meeting. I discussed this with Commissioner Sherman. Afternoon.
That's correct. Thank you.
You don't need an agenda change for that. You can do that in the announcement section. Unless you wanted a line item agenda.
I'll handle it any way you want. Yep.
All right. Well, it's up to you. I mean, if you want a line item, we can add it to the agenda or you can do it during announcements.
I'll do it during announcements.
Okay. Commissioners, any more changes to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I moved, we had adopted agenda as amended to include the removal of the Newlands Wayside Exhibit for eight minutes and deletion of the presentation and discussion on Goods for Good Grant application. Is there a second? Commissioner, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. Commissioner Finacy? Yes, okay, thank you. 700. Okay, so this portion of the agenda, we invite community members to raise their hand if they want to talk or discuss the issue with the Commission. It's a 15, I think 10-minute segment on our agenda. And people in the audience, if you have anything that you want to add, just use the raise your hand function. It could be something on our agenda or something that's not on the agenda. Commissioner Nagy? You're on mute, Commissioner Nagy.
Yep, I know. It just popped up. Thank you. The minute meetings?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. I'm sorry.
You're welcome.
Go right ahead.
Okay. I'm gonna move to adopt the ANC meeting minutes from October 27.
Second.
Thank you.
With technical corrections?
Well, yes, thank you. Thank you. With technical corrections. Between the two of us, we'll get this.
We'll get it. All right. Commissioners, any discussion on this? Okay, Commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, that's 70, 700.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so now we are in the Community Resident Forum Section, which gives residents an opportunity to discuss issues with the ANC that might be on our agenda or might not be on the agenda. We have 10 minutes for this segment. If there's a community member that has a topic that they would like to discuss, just please feel free to use the raise your hand function, and I'll call on you to speak. None? Everybody's waiting for the big discussion. Going once? Going twice? Okay, thank you, community members. We'll use that time to continue on with our discussions. Okay, Commissioner Goslin, you're up next with the Newlands Wayside Exhibit Resolution.
Okay, thank you.
You're on mute.
Thank you. This involves an issue that this ANC has been discussing off and on for more than a decade. The fountain at Chevy Chase Circle is dedicated to Francis G. Newlands and carries a number of commemorative elements on it, including the Newlands name in the coping stones of the fountain basin. Newlands was a US Senator from Nevada and the founder of the Chevy Chase Land Company, and the original developer of Chevy Chase DC and Maryland. While in Congress, he supported measures giving women the right to vote, protecting public lands, and so forth. He was also a very much an avowed racist and anti-immigrant, and the Commission over a number of years has sought to find ways to let people know about that complex history. It's in 2020, in 2020, this Commission's passed a resolution asking for the removal of his name and some explanation of, about him and his views. That culminated in December of 2022 with the erection of a Wayside Exhibit on the east side of Connecticut, just as you are entering the Chevy Chase Circle. And there was an immense amount of work that went into getting agreement for the, about this exhibit and getting the wording such that everybody, all the interested parties agreed. In September of this year, the National Park Service notified the Friends of Chevy Chase Circle, a DC Maryland community group that has done a great deal to revitalize the circle, that it was seeking to change the verbiage in the Wayside Exhibit to comply with President Trump's executive order on bringing accuracy, truth, and sanity to American history. There were a number of conversations between Friends of Chevy Chase Circle officials and the National Park Service about what the revised text and visuals might look like. And then last weekend, the weekend prior, the exhibit and its foundations were removed with no notice to the community, and I suspect, although I can't prove the negative, no notice to anybody in the city. What I'm proposing here is that we ask the National Park Service for an explanation about the removal, some, an indication of what their intentions are, including what the text and visuals of a replacement might be, and for a schedule. And that we agree to support an effort after a decent interval of time, a number of weeks. If the National Park Service is not able to answer these questions, that we seek to replace the sign, both the visuals and the text as they were 10 days ago at that location. I'd just say that one other thing, which is that while the National Park Service installed this sign, this Wayside Exhibit some years ago, they didn't put it in the circle, which is federal land, which is considered part of the Rock Creek Park and therefore administered by the National Park Service. They put it on city land, on the, along the sidewalk on the east side of Connecticut. So I think we would probably need a public space committee permit to put, to put the sign back there. But in any case, I've circulated a petition to this, a resolution to this effect, and I'm happy to take questions. I've heard from Commissioner Nagy this afternoon, and she asked for a small change, which I'm happy to make, which is that we, we don't say in the background and rationale section that the National Park Service itself, that a National Park Service crew removed the sign, because we don't quite know who removed it, although we have had conversations that indicate that it was a National Park Service crew. Thank you.
Commissioner Goslin, can you please put the motion on the floor?
Yeah, I moved that we approve this resolution, calling for the, an explanation, and if none, as forthcoming, replacement of the sign by this ANC Commissioner and relevant community groups.
Is there a second? Commissioners, any discussion?
Just, if I might, and Commissioner Goslin and I chatted about this a bit earlier today as well. Commissioner Goslin, just maybe reiterate what you told me with respect to a concern that reaching out to the National Park Service could in some way complicate getting this resolved.
Well, I guess there are complications on two scores. One is that there is a concern among many of the community groups that have been dealing with this, dealing with the Park Service about this, that we need to be cautious in pressing the Park Service because the really, the really decent people at the top of the Rock Creek Park Administration, National Park people, are in a very difficult position. And on the flip side, I think there's concern among some people that if we, that we would be sort of alerting the Park Service to this, that those who are, you know, who don't like the, this exhibit to the fact that we would like to replace it. So it, those, those are the two concerns.
How do you, how do you handicap those?
How do I handicap this? I, I, I think, I think that this is a safe thing to do. I agree that this is a, this is a pushing, a pushing back. We're 11 months into being a city under the Trump administration. I think some decent, respectful resistance that exhibits our values is a, is a reasonable thing to do. I'm sorry, am I running this further than you?
Brian Klein?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Casla, your comments are exactly right regarding the ground that that sign was, was on. It was not on federal ground. And it just bothers me that the Park Service took the authority that maybe they didn't have to remove the sign, much less put the sign without a permit. That's one thing. And the other thing is, have we exhausted our options in terms of that federal land? In terms of what's on it and how we could change, get Newlands name or anything to do with them off that? I've mentioned a couple ideas, but it takes, I guess, an act of Congress to do anything. But one of my ideas was to annex that land instead of federal, make it a shared DC Maryland piece of land. Yeah, we'd have to maintain the water fountain, and maybe we'd do something different, but at least we'd have rights to it to do what we want to. So that never went anywhere, but I figured I'd mention it again since it's an active topic again. Thank you very much.
Let me just address one thing, which is that actually the National Park Service got a DC Public Space permit to put that sign there. So they, they didn't put it there illegally in any way. I think if, I mean, my only thought, and I don't know this, I'm not a lawyer, but my only thought is that if it takes an act of Congress to chisel something off a fountain that's there, it's probably gonna take an act of Congress to move it from federal land and federal parkland to DC and Maryland. An incredibly lengthy process.
Let me go to Brian Hellman. Brian, you're on mute.
Right. You're still on mute.
Chair Gore and Commissioner Goslin. My question is whether this is an opportunity to add some additional comments, and my interest is in part about the evidence that at Chevy Chase Parkway and Oliver, there's some evidence that there was a graveyard, and 14 skeletons were discovered there during construction close to the turn of the century, and there's, there's a newspaper article about that. And of course, there was a, there was a graveyard of the enslaved that was in Chevy Chase, Maryland, that is better known and more researched as well. But I think acknowledging that there were graves of the enslaved not far from that place is something that is important to acknowledge. Those, the Belt Plantation graveyard was evidently at the corner of Chevy Chase Parkway and Oliver Street at the bottom of the hill. And I think that fact is something that could be honored in a way that is currently missing from the notation about Colonel Belt on the other side of Chevy Chase Circle. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Let me, let me just address the issue of, there may be many other things that we should be marking in Chevy Chase, but I do think that responding to this particular action and responding relatively quickly is best done by sticking with the language on the Wayside Exhibit at the circle that was there. I have to say, as somebody who was, who sits on the board of the Friends of Chevy Chase Circle, getting to the language was a very, very long process. And we open that whole issue up if we start adding, seeking to add or change the language. So I think the, the, the most expeditious way to respond to this is to stick with, just replace what was there with the one change that we take credit for it instead of the National Park Service.
Commissioner, any more discussion?
So.
Commissioners, all those in favor of the resolution? And just a point of clarification. Commissioner Goslin, you said that the change you made to the resolution that was requested by Commissioner Nagy is in the current copy that's on the website, or can you point that out so that the Commission is clear where that changes? You're on.
It is not in the, in the in the version on the website. The change is in paragraph eight. It says, "An NPR, an NPS, a National Park Service crew abruptly removed the exhibit in its entirety." And Commissioner Nagy asks that, that that's a, that the ANC understands that an NPS, is that, is that adequate for you?
That's, that's pretty much what I was hoping for. Thank you.
The ANC understands that an NPS crew abruptly removed the exhibit. That's the only change. It's, it, it remove, it, it leaves open the question of exactly who did it.
Got it. Okay. Commissioner Simmons, did you have your hand up?
No, that's okay. Thank you.
All right. So Commissioners, just to be clear, the vote is on the resolution as amended, and Commissioner Goslin accepted the friendly amendment, so, and he just read that out. Seeing no further discussion, Commissioners, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Commissioner Simmons, I can't see you. Okay, thank you. 700. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Goslin. All right, and next up, Commissioner Sherman, you're discussing on Pepco?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Gore. I'm very happy that we are finally getting to this long-awaited discussion on Pepco rate hikes that have been a source of concern to so many people in our, in our neighborhood. I want to introduce, and they will be the briefers tonight, Cheryl Morris, who's a consumer outreach specialist for the Office of the People's Council, and Lawrence Daniels, who's an attorney with the Office of the People's Council. And I understand that Mr. Daniels will be our briefer tonight, so if you can activate your videos, Ms. Morris and Mr. Daniels, that would be great. We'll bring you into the conversation.
Do I need?
Super. Very nice to have both of you.
Commissioner Sherman, do I need?
Sure, yeah. Well, I think, yeah. And Mr. Daniels, you have a presentation that you're going to want to be able to share your screen, I assume, correct?
Correct. That is correct.
Okay, okay, fine. So if you can allow him to share his screen. Let me just do a very, very brief introduction, not of Cheryl Morris and Lawrence Daniels, but of the issue as it concerns our community. And you can, Mr. Daniels, correct any of my factual statements here if I've got anything wrong. Following the Pepco rate increase in June in particular, we saw a lot of comments from our community about precipitous increases in their monthly electricity bills. Our community listserv was lit up with comments. Commissioners, got comments. Of course, we live here in the neighborhood, so we also saw our electricity rates go up. Then this followed an increase, the going back to January of this year, that were both, as I understand it, part of a multi-year series of adjustments that Pepco had commissioned, the Public Service Commission, to approve, which it did do, as I understand it, back in 2021. So these changes have been rolling out over time. But their cumulative effect has become such that people have really begun to notice sharp increases in their monthly bills. And so we have wanted to have you come and explain the good work you're doing, because you are in the front lines of advocating for consumers and have been challenging these rate increases, which we thank you for. And so we want to turn it over to you to explain what the nature of the problem is and what, of course, OPC is doing about it. And then also, if you could, touch on the fact that, as I understand matters, there's another rate increase that's set to go into effect in January of next year, 2026. So we're sitting here with further pain to come perhaps. But with that, let me turn it over to you. Thank you, Mr. Daniels, for being with us tonight, and take it away.
Okay. I want to thank the ANC for inviting us out tonight to talk about this issue. And what I'm gonna do is going to give you a brief background of how the case came to be. The rates that we're now paying and the rates that we'll be paying in January, and some actions that have taken place recently that may impact the rates, perhaps in a good way. So let me see if I can share the screen. Okay, do you see that?
Coming up, yeah.
You got it? Okay.
Yep.
All right, so I want to start out by, let's see. Their request, on back in April 2023, Pepco filed a request for approval of a rate increase asking for 186 million, 186.5 million dollars over three years, '24, '25, and '26. And the Commission established the case as 1176, and the purpose of that case was to determine whether Pepco was entitled to this rate increase, and more importantly, whether the company can proceed forward, going forward with multi-year rate increases. That is, instead of just having a rate case that, that impacts rates for one year, but it would go on for two or three years. That is, instead of just having a rate case that, that impacts rates for one year, but it would go on for two or three years. OPC had an initial issue with this case when it was filed because there was supposed to be an examination of the prior multi-year rate plan that you talked about that was approved as a pilot in the last rate case, 1156. And there was supposed to be a lessons learned, so they would understand what, what some of the, the good and the bad of that case were and whether or not there should be some adjustments to the multi-year rate plan. That never happened. Yet Pepco still filed this most recent rate case in 2023 and was going forward. Over objection, the commission moved forward. And as we usually do, we file testimony and we ask discovery and it's an extensive process. And then we would usually have an evidentiary hearing, which is required by statute in a contested case, such, such as a case of a rate case. In this particular case, the commission decided not to have an evidentiary hearing. And at an evidentiary hearing, OPC and other parties get to examine the details of, you know, the, the very minute details of why particular rate increases are going to be in effect. Get to question Pepco's experts to find out the basis for it and whether or not it's reasonable. The commission did not hold that hearing. Instead, they had us file a series of pleadings as opposed to having this detailed hearing. Of course, we went forward. And in November of 2024, the commission approved the, what they called a two-year modified rate, multi-year rate plan pilot. And instead of approving three years, they approved only two for an amount of $123 million for the first 99.7 of those going into effect this year, which is calendar year 25, which we are currently in. And then in January, as you, as you noted, an additional $23.7 million will begin in 2026. So you're right, it does build upon each other. Now, again, as I said, we had some issues with this case, both procedurally and substantive. In terms of procedural, our due, our due process rights were violated because we did, the commission did not hold an evidentiary hearing. We appealed it first to the commission as we were required to. That was rejected. And we also appealed it to the DC Court of Appeals. And our basis again was we were denied our due process rights. And many of the commission's decisions were not based on any facts in the record. Or they were just conclusory statements. And we did hold an argument on October the 28th, it's about two weeks ago, in front of the DC Court of Appeals. And it went very, very well for the office. The commission was told bluntly that, that you should have held an evidentiary hearing. This, this was a contested case. The parties did have a right to, to test the veracity of the witnesses and their proposals to increase the rates over eight, over eight, what there was a three-year period. And right now, what we're waiting for is the, the Court of Appeals to come out with a decision. And we're, we're pretty, pretty confident that what's going to happen is the case, the court is going to do one of two things. Either they're going to send the case back to the, to the commission to actually hold evidentiary hearings, which would probably bring back lower rates. Or secondly, this is the most, this is the thing, this is what we asked for, is that they vacate the order. And that would render those rates that were approved to be illegal. And if that's the case, then those rates that we paid for the last now almost year would have to be credited back in some way, shape, or form to rate payers. And then Pepco would have to have another rating. They, they could then file another rate case going forward. But again, that's a pretty aggressive ask for the Office of the People's Council, but we believe it is valid. Well, you cannot establish rates without having this hearing. I mean, it's absolutely necessary. Court made that pretty clear to Pepco. So we're just waiting to see whether or not the court is going to agree with us in terms of taking the step of vacating the order, that is, finding that the rates are illegal. And again, there would have to be a, a credit back to consumers in some, in some fashion. So that's where we sit with the, the rate increase. And I also was here tonight, I don't know if you all wanted to talk about the outages, the petition on the outages, but I have a brief presentation on that if you'd like, or, and at the end, I could answer questions on both.
Could, could we?
I could move forward.
Chair Gore, if we could focus on this piece and then segue to that piece so that we're not doubling back, if that's okay? Yeah, I think it would be very helpful, Mr. Daniels, for community members and for commissioners, if you just take a minute or two and explain why these cases were requested by Pepco. What's the basis for the, for the rate?
Well, the basis is what they're saying is that they needed to meet the city's aggressive clean energy goals, decarbon, decarbonization goals for greenhouse gas emissions and also for transportation electrification goals that the city has. And the one thing that we pointed out that we wanted to, to examine their witnesses on is that none, none of what they were proposing was for clean energy. This is just a regular run-of-the-mill distribution rate case in terms of what components had to be in place to deliver safe, adequate, and reliable service, as they always do. None of this was about climate. And that was one of the things that we wanted to test, to say to their, their experts, it point, point out exactly what is, is about climate in this case. And we, and we had them dead to rights because there was none. And that's, that's one of the main reasons why we took this to the Court of Appeals and say, look, this thing was invalid. So, you know, that was the, the primary basis of what they wanted to, reason why they were asking for this, this large, large rate increase.
Do you have figures that across DC, rates have gone up by $40 to $50 a month on average? I don't know if that figure is correct, but we have heard some fairly sharp increases that exceed that by an order of magnitude here in our neighborhood, owing perhaps to larger homes or, you know, greater usage of energy, what have you. Do, do you have figures on how much on average monthly electricity bills have gone up?
Well, they, you know, Pepco always puts out an estimate based upon if you use about, I think it's about 615 kilowatts a month, which, you know, is, is, is easy to do. But they say that's the average of what most homes use. So you're really going to have to look at the average usage that you, you have for your particular home to determine how much the increase should be. But, you know, we, we were going to challenge that usage estimate as well in the case to say, look, that's, that's far too low from what we're seeing because we are, we're starting to see large increases as well from the first time they had the pilot. So the fact that these rates are going up so high, I don't think it's that the meters are wrong. I just think that either people are using more than, than Pepco estimated. But, you know, that's, those, those are some of the things that we're still searching as to find out why are rates increasing so much? We know it's not from, you know, people have asked about data centers and that's, those costs have not been, started to come down yet. But, you know, that's, that's the concern we have. We want to find out what is actually causing this large increase in rates that use, that has not occurred to this, to this extent in, in my 25 years that I've been here. So that's, I think, one of the, the details we missed in having the evidentiary hearing.
Right. Commissioners and then members of the community questions? Commissioner Finacy?
Hi. Thank you for coming, Mr. Daniels.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Gore and I are two of your biggest fans.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for your help. I had heard that before the pep, the auction that determined the rates, that Pepco had been denying some green energy projects, that there were some clean energy projects that were turned down. That's the first of my questions. Do you know anything about that?
I really can't speak to that in terms of what was turned down, but you did mention something that I, I should mention that, that it did actually cause the rates to increase in the wholesale market where Pepco actually goes to acquire its energy from the, what's called the PJM. There was a very, very large increase due to the, the amount of electricity that was available to the, I think it's about 14 states that share this power generator. And that rate went up, you know, exponentially. And, and that caused rates to go up about, by at least $10 a flat, you know, across the board for everybody. In, in addition to this multi-year rate plan. So you had on top of the multi-year rate plan from the first pilot, you also then had these new rates from PJM that started in about June or July of this year. You probably saw a bump. And that's probably about between $9 and $10. OPC has a report on what happened at the PJM that, that I can send to, to, send to you that explains exactly what happened, exactly what OPC has done in response to that. And the fact that those rates should not, you know, at the next auction, when they go out to buy energy, should not be anywhere near that. This is an issue that a lot of states in this, in this particular area, from Pennsylvania, Ohio, Maryland, are all grappling with, with this large increase in wholesale rates. And this has nothing to do with Pepco. Pepco, they just, that's where the energy is made, from the big generators. So all the utility companies pass that cost down because a lot of generating plants retired and they were not replaced. Or the ones that were clean energy generators were not used. They were not online to be available to, to, to supply power. And that's why there was less supply available and that caused the, the price to go up. But a lot of those issues have been addressed and it's outlined in the report that we did. Again, that I can send you, I can send it to you this evening after we get off in our presentation.
And thank you. And then the other question, I was wondering, you know, they, when they were advertising before the big rate increases, we were getting mailers that said, oh, your rates are going to go up about $20 a month. But we've had people going up 200, 300, 500. Could we ask that they provide in our ANC like a July to July, August to August, September, December, like calendar year comparison for the homes in our ANC? Because I don't think their estimates are anywhere close to accurate.
You mean, could Pepco provide that?
Yeah. Can we ask them?
Yeah, we can absolutely ask them.
How do we, how do we do that? Because we could get that, if the ANC could ask, right, that, you know, as opposed to an individual, I think that would be more powerful. How do we do that?
It could be by a, a letter. It could be by a resolution. But I think a letter just from the ANCs to Pepco, and I can find out who the individuals should be. They've had a lot of changes over there since the merger. But we do have a list of names that we could reach out and, and say that this is what, you know, this particular ANC, we'll list the, the names of the ANC. They want a, you know, a year-to-year comparison. If you want June to June or July to July, or, you know, 23 versus 24, I would probably go back to 2021 through current because that will capture the first multi-year rate plan. And it will also show this increase in PJM. So they should be able to show all those data points from the rates where they were before the first multi-year rate plan, then when the new one went into effect, and when the one that went into effect, the second one that was approved, that where you're paying the current rates and the rates that are set to, to go up in, in January.
Thank you. I'll talk to my fellow commissioners. I think those are. Yeah, I mean, I see a comment in the chat that we could check the year-to-year comparisons on the Pepco website. But, you know, rather than our having to go and manually do it, if they could generate a spreadsheet and then, you know, have the tallies, I think that would be much easier.
Would someone volunteer, I guess, their homes or their accounts that could be anonymized to when they do, when they do a presentation? You know, maybe you could have a house that's, you know, of a certain size. You know, perhaps an apartment, perhaps a smaller home or a larger home. And again, we'd anonymize the name, the address, the account number. And then Pepco could show those in a particular presentation. Of course, with permission from those, from those residents to show the, the increase from, again, I would go back to prior to the, the pilot.
Yeah.
Good food for thought. Thank you so much.
For that suggestion and, and Mr. Daniels, I think we absolutely would probably want to do that, but we can talk among the commission about that to, to do that. I think the committee would be pleased that we're acting on their behalf in that regard. Because what Commissioner Finacy just said is what I've also, also heard, the reports of sharply increased bills, not 20 or 30 or 40 or 50 a month, but into the hundreds. Which is obviously shocker, you know, for a lot of people. Commissioner Nagy?
Yeah, thank you. I, I might could volunteer my house for that because my bill went up by $250 in July and then stayed that way, even though it wasn't that hot. I could sort of understand how much the bill was. But my bill has basically doubled in the last few months. So I'm sure I'm not alone and someone else can also volunteer to do this. Thank you for joining us and thank you for all the work that you're doing. It's, it's really remarkable and it's, it's really a fascinating area. And I'm sitting here in awe of what you know they're doing. You're very welcome. Do you know when a ruling is expected on your DC Court of Appeals case?
Usually. Usually it takes a couple of months, but the, the judges realize that because the rates are going up in January, that there, there seems to be an urgency to have a decision soon. And because it seems so clear cut from all of the judges' questions that, that the commission did not do what it was supposed to do. I believe there will be a decision probably before the end of December coming out, probably mid-December, probably about a month from now, I would think.
In time. In, in time to forestall the rate increases in January, perhaps?
Yes. And, and that's, that's one of the things we're looking at in the office in terms of the different scenarios that could happen. One thing we would do, if they say they're vacating the order, obviously, we would tell the commission, do not increase the rates that were set by this order that has now been deemed illegal. Freeze the rates. And then let's look at how do we give back a credit for the time period of if, if the court decides that this order was illegal. So, you know, there's going to be some administrative, I guess we call it clawing back, but we're, we're willing to do that.
The court enjoying the raising the rates in January at this point?
You know, I'm thinking the Court of Appeals could, in its order, say, you know, if they decide that the rates are, were invalid or illegal. I believe the court could go as far as to say, do not increase those rates that are set to increase in January. And instead, the commission should go back and try and figure out how to provide that credit if indeed they find it to be illegal. For us, if they say, go back, commission and, and hold another hearing, of course, we're going to ask for the same thing, that one, the rates should not go into effect in January. And we still need to at least put a freeze on the rates that are in place now because obviously those rates aren't, aren't valid if they're going to have, hold another hearing to determine what the rate should have been. So it's a very complicated case, but I do believe we're going to prevail in it. And it's going to be a lot of work once that order comes out. I'm not the lead attorney for the case, but the attorney who's on it, we, I can certainly bring him back for that, that meeting. I can come back with him when Pepco does that presentation to, to walk you through the comparison.
That would be awesome. I do have one last question and then yield to other people. It seems like one of the big drivers of this is the wholesalers, the PJM.
Correct.
What can be done about, about them? I know that, you know, I, I did note that several, that many states participate with that. Are, are the states pushing back against these wholesalers?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Pennsylvania and Maryland are both very, very aggressive in asking for more generation to be online. Some of the plants that have, the problem is PJM is in charge of approving new power plants coming online. And that process is just intolerably slow. And we, all the states have asked them to increase the pace of your approvals for that. That'll get more generation online. And there are other forms of generation that can, that can come online that states have been asking for. And that actually can, can, can happen fairly quickly to prevent a, a shortage in supply and the, the great spike in rates.
We should wish them success.
No, yes, oh, definitely. It's, we don't, you know, it's, it's, it's we're, we're pretty busy. I mean, there's no, there's no shortage of work for us, you know, Pepco. And then I could, I could tell you some of the stories about Washington Gas, but yeah, the Pepco keeps us pretty, pretty busy.
Great. Let's.
We'll talk about that too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Nagy. Commissioner Gore and then Kate wants the community.
Thank you. I just want to address a quick question that's in the chat. Does the DC streetlight LED conversion project have any impact on rates that DC residents pay?
Ooh. They have, they have their own rate. I would have to check to see what the impact is. Could you say that again, the DC streetlight?
Yep. Does the DC streetlight LED conversion project have any impact on rates that DC residents pay?
Residential risks. I'll have to get back to you on that.
You might have to. You might have to coordinate with DDOT on that.
Either them or DC government would, and they, they're usually in these evidence hearings. So that, that's something I could ask and, and find out whether or not the city pays for those itself, you know, separate and apart from what residential rates are. I'm thinking that's what it is, but I don't want to commit to that answer. I'll find out and, and send back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Kate?
Hello. Thank you so much.
Yes.
So regarding this, I also am curious about the question. Because like for our house, there are certain options in terms of getting some of your supply from green energy. So we have a certain percentage of our power supplied by Arcadia. And some sort of like, I don't have the exact details, but something about an investment in a solar farm in New England or something. But our, our rates have still gone up from 11 to 17 cents per kilowatt hour. But like, I don't understand, I guess, you know, and the transmission costs and all those fees are still there. But we are trying to support the, you know, the green energy. So like, what's the difference between those types of power plants versus other ones? And then why would those rates also be going up if it's? Well, yeah. And also, I would be happy to, well, I should probably check with my husband before I say it. But I'm happy to share our, our energy. We don't have a huge house. But we do have, you know, we have an electric vehicle, we have other factors. But I, I do think there's something we said that, you know, people now have some sort of a combination of maybe solar panels plus, you know, something supplied by Pepco or Arcadia or, you know, how does that all work together? Is Pepco basically trying to make up their losses by charging us more because of the green energy?
Well, if you have a supplier, that, that's, that's whose rates you're going to be subject to. Now, that's driven by the contract. There, there are some suppliers, we've found, that you'll start out with a rate, maybe for, you know, three months, six months. And then after that, that rating is, is subject to whatever the market is. And your rates could go, we have seen bills. And I know Cheryl and Linda who are on from OPC, we've seen bills, you know, start out reasonable for two or three months with the teaser rate. And then after that, the market rate kicks in and it could be three or four times what the teaser rate was. So you have to be very careful when you sign up for those suppliers to know exactly what you're, what you're locking into in terms of rates. But no, Pepco is not, you know, making up for that. That's really going to be driven by the contract that you have with that supplier.
Correct.
Yeah.
Great. Thank, thank, thank you, Kate. Did that answer your question?
Mostly. I think I'm still curious about, you know, perhaps how the, the the increases are so significant when you are getting it from various different.
Yeah.
I, I don't have the terminology, but you know, the different suppliers and whatnot, so.
Well, those suppliers' rates are not, are not regulated by the commission. They, they charge what, you know, what they believe people will pay. So the commission doesn't control their rates.
The Arcadia, like the, our, our
Correct. That's correct. Yes.
If I may interject, the third-party suppliers tend to be always hired in Pepco. As Lawrence stated, as much as two to three times. The highest I've seen this season was 34 cents per kilowatt right now for a particular supplier. So it can be, it can be very noticeable when you have them.
And that, you know, but we're very, very energy-conscious and sustainability-conscious. And so when we initially signed up, you know, that was a decision that we made as a household, that we were willing to pay a higher rate because it was green energy. However, that, you know, that was a decision we made years ago. But now these sudden increases are happening along with, because we don't get 100% from, from them. But so that's just kind of my question. And I mean, I would be happy to share whatever bills we need to or, you know, whatnot. But that, I guess that, that would be the, the question is, why is it also suddenly impacting it now when it's not 100% Pepco? But it didn't, but it didn't for years. And we were fine paying more because it was green energy. It's just now, it, it all is, all is increasing, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other community questions or commissioner questions? Well, I want to thank our OPC colleagues so much for being with us. And again, apologies for previous scheduling. Yeah, Laura, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he said he might be able to talk real quick about the outages. I don't want to get us too late. But is there, is there a quick update?
Yes, I can tell you that obviously the, you know, I don't know if this is sharing again, but I can, okay, I'll pull this up and I'll just go to the where we are right now. You know, what we've done for you so far, you know, of course, we attended the meeting on September the 10th. We did hire our outside consultant, who has about 20 years of experience with Pepco's network, to do a review of what happened with that outage in your wards. We filed a petition and that petition was granted. We worked with the council members, both Councilman Freeman and Louis George. And Louis George actually did file a letter in support with the commission. And also gave you an example of a similar issue that happened in Ward 7 and 8 back in 2008. And in that instance, Pepco had to pay out about $155,000 in claims. Now, I can't guarantee that's going to happen here. But what I can tell you is that what the, the scope of the petition is going to be is, is what's on the screen. They're going to look at the cause of the power surge, not the outage. We know what caused the outage. It was the tree. But the surge, we, we, our expert has pretty much pinpointed. It was the, the backfeed that occurred when they brought the power back on was a problem. Compounded with the fact of the downed wires, of course, we, you know, you all have seen the, the video of the wire dangling on the street, actually, you know, burning a hole in the ground. That should not have happened. Their restoration practices, there were a number of steps they're supposed to take in bringing power up. He found some inadequacies there. And of course, a number of you have filed claims with Pepco and, and some of them were denied very, very quickly, actually before they identified the cause of the surge.
Yes. Someone in the chat is asking for a copy of this.
Hello?
You can go on.
Yeah. And so we're, we've questioned Pepco on their determination that this was an act of God. It was not. Obviously, this was within Pepco's control. And many of the things that our expert has identified, certainly put it squarely on their control. And also, the commission has asked a set of questions to Pepco about this outage and the restoration process. Once those answers are in, the commission is then going to ask the parties to start, start submitting different filings on their positions. And they're going to start asking the residents to talk about their experiences as well. Once that happens, I will let you know and how you can participate and what, what days and times the commission is going to hold hearings. So that we can be, you can be active in this process. And, and we, our goal in this is to make sure that the, the problem is identified and corrected. So it doesn't happen again. Again, this was not as a result of some violent storm. It's just a tree falling and restoration and the restoration caused the issue. But also, we want to make sure that you're educated about how to apply for your claim with Pepco and how to be compensated for any losses that you have. So that's, that's our, our goal. And right now, I would say that you should gather as much detail as you can regarding the damage to your property. And I'll send you this presentation, so you don't have to, to write it down. And the big questions are, was the property in need of repair? Has it resulted in damage or did it have to be replaced? And what is the cost of that repair or replacement? And provide as, as much as you can in terms of vendor receipts. And if you, if you're ready, if you have all that, apply for a claim through Pepco's, Pepco's process. Councilmember Pinto in Ward 2 has had this issue on Capitol Hill as well. And we're going to actually expand this investigation to include that and also areas in Ward 6. The exact same thing happened to them, but this happened back in February. So they're going to be looking at that as well to see how many claims Pepco has actually accepted. Actually, in the last year, since last year to date. She asked for to provide that in her hearing and we're going to have that answer very shortly. But I would encourage you to write the commission, informal case 1185, to conduct this hearing. And to make sure that, that, you know, the outcome that we want, which is explanation of what happened and also to be compensated, is achieved in that process. And as I said, we'll keep you informed about, you know, how you can participate. And this is, this is, of course, our, our contact information. Again, I'll see the whole slideshow. So you can have this. But if you have questions about, you know, either the Pepco rates or outage, you can reach any one of the three of us. And again, I'm going to send the, the final PJM report that talks about the wholesale. And I'm going to give you a contact, probably, well, no, they're open tomorrow. Pepco's open. I can find out the contact for the comparison that you, I, of, you know, I'll let them know several different sizes of homes. Comparison bills from dating back to probably 2021. And I would hope maybe by this year, they could have that presentation to, to show you that comparison and talk about some of the factors that are driving the increase in the bills.
Mr. Daniels?
Very good.
Question. There's, Commissioner Sherman, there's a question in the chat. And that was, can, maybe just a little bit more explanation? The question is, do we write to the commission now or?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And what's the process? So do, who would they write? Can you send us that information and we can send that out to our constituents or can you let them?
Yes. Yeah, I'll, I'll send you the, you know, the address and the email to send it to. And which formal case 1185, how to put that in the caption. So that they can, it'll be, it'll be lodged in that particular proceeding and before the commissioners. I'll send that to you as well.
Great. And Mr. Daniels, there's probably other questions in the chat, if you don't mind chatting with the community while you're here.
Okay, let's see. What do I see here?
Well, maybe what we could do is if you have a moment to stay with us, Mr. Daniels, and see those questions in the chat after we end your formal presentation here. Because I think we're behind schedule. We will need to move on to the next item. So thank you. Again, thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing this information. We look forward to following up and we appreciate so much all the work you're doing on behalf of our residents and all the consumers in DC. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'll start looking at the chat and providing answers.
Okay, so, very, very good. And Commissioner could we just do one quick thing, just the concurrence of the commission, that we would go ahead and follow up and actually ask Pepco for those rate comparisons going back to 2021? I'm happy to work with Commissioner Finacy in crafting a letter, if that's okay with everybody? Does that?
Yeah, I would think we need to vote. I would ask to put a vote, because in the letter, we need to say commission, that the commission voted and approved in the letter. So you want to put a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I just, I just moved that we do follow up to write to Pepco and ask for the rate comparison that we've just discussed. And I would be happy to work with Commissioner Finacy to make that happen. Do I have a second?
Second. Commissioners, all those in favor? Okay, 700. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right. So next on the agenda is discussion and possible vote on motion to amend the 2021 Resolution establishing the Racial and Social Equity Standing Commission. And I have myself and Commissioner Sherman up for this. The resolution was my original resolution in 2021, but, I mean, Sherman, go on and explain what you're asking the commission to do.
Well, actually, I'm, just for clarity, I'm focused more on the procedural matters we discussed of reappointing the chairs and then revisiting the appointment of the committee members to do that consistent with the reappointment of the chairs. I, I don't actually have a proposed amendment of the resolution. So just to be clear, I'm not seeking to amend the resolution. It's the element of the resolution that speaks to the one-year terms, renewable annually without limit, that we are obviously invoking now in terms of the reappointment of the chairs and the appointment of our, of our committee members. So if I was not clear about that, when you and I spoke, I, I, I don't have an amendment to the resolution, long and short of it. Yeah.
All right. Because I thought when we spoke, you said that you wanted to move the line and I actually circled it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, refresh my memory on that then. Sorry.
So when we talked, you said you wanted to, the only thing that you wanted to do on this resolution was to delete on the further resolved, which is page five, item three, the appointment of committee chairs shall precede the appointment of committee members. And you wanted to delete the next line. The commission by majority vote shall appoint two commissioners as committee co-chairs.
Correct. Thank you very much. Sorry, I just forgot about that. Yes. That is, that is because, yeah, no, no, I appreciate that. And it does conflict with the bylaws. And for that reason, I'm proposing we strike that language from the resolution. The result, to be clear, the, the bylaws do not prescribe that they be commissioners to co-chair committees. Commissioners can, of course, but yeah, right. Okay, so the motion would be to strike that language.
That's my question. No, I have a, okay.
Oh, there's been moved and properly seconded. So now commissioners, we're in discussion. Commissioner Nagy?
Okay. So my question is, what exact language are we, is that motion supposed to be striking?
Well, I'll read it again. On the page five of that particular resolution, under further resolved, the language that Commissioner Sherman proposes to strike is in section three. Second sentence that reads, the commission by majority vote shall appoint two commissioners as committee co-chairs.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion, commissioners? Seeing none? All those in favor, raise your hand. Commissioner, I'm sorry, I didn't, okay, got you. 70. Commissioner Grunwald, I didn't see at first. Okay, so what I'll do is put a word, send out a word version, re-edit and send it through so you guys can check that off. So the next discussion is on the appointment of committee chairpersons, Commissioner Corinthius Simmons and Elizabeth Martin.
Right. So I am moving per the resolution of 2021 and our need to reappoint the committee co-chairs annually, that we proceed now to do this. As I understand, they were last appointed in April of 2023. So we want to go ahead and make that change and, and go ahead and, and reappoint them. The only question would be if we reappoint, given that this is meant to be done annually, do we, do we do it retroactively to the first of this year? And then we do it again in January on an annual basis? This obviously connected to the members. So we do need to go ahead and reappoint the committee chairs to correct the action with respect to the appointment of the committee members on October 6.
So, um, commissioners, any, well, Commissioner Sherman, do you want to put a motion on the floor and then we can?
Well, I, well, the, the motion then would be that we move to appoint, reappoint the current chair of the raised committee, Corinthius Simmons, a commissioner now, of course, and Libby Martin. Do I have a second?
Second. Okay. Motion been made and discussion, Commissioner Grunwald and Nagy?
Okay, hi. So I'm a little confused. So are we, does the, the term end now at the end of December and we vote again in January? Is that what we're discussing? Yep. So then, so my other question is, are Corinthius Simmons and Elizabeth Martin the only two people who are up for consideration here? Thank you.
Or co-chairs, yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Co-chairs of the committee, yes.
Because, because they're the, they were the existing committee member chairs. And so we're, we're back, we're backdating them kind of. Is that it for the year? Is that it? And then we vote again in January on co-chairs? Is that it?
Yes, we can do that. That'll, that'll bring us, you know, closer in line to, I think, what our bylaws call for. Commissioner Nagy? Commissioner Nagy?
You're on mute.
Yeah, I know. Sorry. I'll, I'll get the hang of this eventually, I hope. That was also my question. Um, that was also my question, and I would like to see the terms be co, be, be calendar year from so back to the first of the year, ending on the end of, at the end of this year, and then up again in January.
Okay, that's the proposal on the table.
Yeah. And I, I think that's consistent with our bylaw.
Right.
Any other discussion commissioners? Okay, seeing none commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Any extensions? Okay, vote is six zero one. Okay, uh, next discussion regarding this is uh, Commissioner Sherman, you want to explain what you want to do with the possible vote to rescind the appointments and then reappoint?
Right. And this has to do with the fact that the co-chairs by our bylaws need to be appointed before committee members. On October 6th, the commission approved the committee members without having previously co-chairs, which we have just now done. So we're seeking simply to correct that circumstance. So it's a two-step process. First, we'll move, we rescind the vote of October 6th. And once that is done, I will move that we appoint the members that were appointed on October 6th. Uh, as a slate, the names remain the same. So it's a simple two-step process to everybody. So I'm going to, Chair Gore, does that make sense? Is that good?
Yes, can you put your motion on the floor?
So I'm going to move that we rescind the vote of October 6th to appoint the six members of the raised committee um, that were uh, appointed by action of the commission at the meeting then. Do I have a second?
Second. Okay, discussion, Commissioner Grunwald.
Uh, yeah, so um, yeah, I, I would support that. But then when we go back and vote on these folks again, um, we never got the uh, opportunity to vote uh, on individuals. Uh, this was presented to us as a slate. And I would like to, I think that we should be voting on uh, prospective committee members of all committees uh, individually. And it can be done uh by silent vote. I think that's probably best when you're voting on individuals. That's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Nagy?
Thank you. Um, so are we again voting for this year, just for this year? Correct, till the end of the year and then we vote again in January on who's on the committee?
Certainly by me, we could do another vote on, in January if we want to make it on an annual basis and regularize it that way. I've, just as speaking as one commissioner, would be fine with that. The by, the A and C resolution on raised does say annual renewal, doesn't specify that it be in January, but if we wanted to make that the standard, then we could simply take that action again in, in January.
May I respond?
Sure, Commissioner Nagy.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think we should do it in January, um, in part because uh, the new commissioners are seated in January, and I think that the terms of our committee members should coincide with the calendar year terms that commissioners serve. So the commissioners have input into who's on committees when they come on the commission. So I would like to see it be an annual thing uh, beginning in conformity with our bylaws. I'd like to see it be annual. I would argue that it would be January 1st through December 31st.
Any other comments? My only comment, I don't mind the um, um, I, I just think um, the co-chairs will need to explain this to the um, members to make sure that they understand the uh, bylaw process and that the appointments came later in the year than we traditionally do. Um, and you know, hopefully that there'll be no issue with voting in this same slate in, in January. And at the same time, we can uh, resolicit because if we're gonna do committees and get them back aligned in terms of the timeframe, then we need to get the solicitations out so that we have time to vote on any new members that might want to be added to that. Commissioner Grunwald?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to add that I, if, if we're not going to vote on um these new members individually, then I'm going to have to abstain from voting on the slate. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. And um, any other commissioner comments before I make another comment? I would just say on this one, we've already voted on these individuals. Um, I have no problem with voting on them as a slate. We've already approved them once. Slates, uh, we would, I would still take, I mean, as a commission, you still, your vote is public. So we would still, you know, have to display like who's voted on what. And we would have to name each person that we're voting on. Um, but in this instance, we're just kind of self-correcting um, from something that we did at the previous meeting. Um, these committee members were all
Right.
previously voted on. So I personally have no issue with the slate. Commissioner Grunwald?
Yeah, uh, but we didn't have the opportunity last time to vote on them as individuals. And the reason I'm concerned with this is I believe there's one person who doesn't belong on the committee. And for that reason, um, you know, that's why I want to vote individually. Thank you.
So the that I
Yeah, Commissioner.
Just the first is to
Wait a minute, Commissioner Sherman, um, Commissioner Simmons has her hand raised.
Um, Commissioner Grunwald, could you elaborate more on why they don't belong in our, on the committee?
Uh, excuse me, commissioners, let me just interject rules of the road. Um, address the chair, um, and make sure the chair gives you the floor to speak so we don't get too cross-winded. Um, um, so and I, I believe commi- Commissioner Grunwald has responded.
Uh, yeah, so, no, I will, I will not do that, no.
Any other commissioner? So Commissioner Sherman, um, the, you have uh, two options. We can do the slate or we can do individual. Um,
Well, our first action is to rescind and then we have a new motion to appoint.
Sure.
So the, yeah, the precision is on the table. Yeah.
Yeah, then, yes, exactly. The, the motion on the floor is to
On the floor.
Then, right. So let's, let's um, settle that one first and then we'll take a second motion.
Right.
So Commissioner, the motion is to rescind that motion that was on October 6th. Um, all those in favor, please raise your hand. I cannot see. I'm have, I'm sorry, Commissioner Nagy, can you do a um voice vote? I just, I cannot see all the commissioners on the screen.
Yeah, sure. Um, we'll do it by SMD.
Yeah.
Um, SMD one zero one, how do you vote?
Um, in favor, yes.
In favor of precision, just to be clear. Okay, SMD zero two?
In favor.
Zero three?
Favor.
Yeah, zero four?
In favor.
Yeah, zero five?
Abstaining.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Abstaining.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner, I'm sorry, uh, zero six? Commissioner Goslin?
I can elaborate. He said in favor.
From, you're on mute, Peter.
I got it, I got it, in favor.
In favor, thank you, Commissioner. And that leaves me, and I vote in favor.
Okay, so um, motion passes six zero one? Two percent. Okay, Commissioner, um, Sherman, now your second motion.
Yeah, the second motion, I move that we, that we uh, appoint the six members, six nominees that had been previously proposed and acted on on October 6th uh, that we now move forward to go ahead and appoint them um, to the committee. Do I have a second?
My second.
Great.
Discussion on this motion, commissioners. So we might want to go back um, to Commissioner Grunwald's question, just to clarify, Commissioner Sherman, if we're voting as a slate. The way I read, read your motion or interpret your motion is that it's a slate. Um, do you want to vote individually or would you want to vote on a slate?
Well, I, since we, we took the action previously as a slate, and understanding the concerns, I would propose that we move desire to abstain from voting on a particular member that not vote for the, I'm just, I, that's what I would put for.
Commissioner Grunwald?
Yeah, you're, you're breaking up quite a bit there, Bruce. Um, yeah, okay, I can deal with that. Um, uh, I just will abstain from this vote. Uh, and with the understanding that we're going to be voting on these members again in January, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? And Commissioner Nagy, I'm going to ask you another favor to do a voice vote. I just don't see everybody on my screen.
Not, not a problem.
Thank you.
No problem.
So um, go on, you can start the roll call and the votes.
Okay, uh, SMD zero one?
Yes.
Um, zero two?
Yes.
Zero three?
Abstain.
Zero four?
Yes.
Zero five?
Yes.
Zero six?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and then zero seven abstains.
Motion carried?
Yep.
Five zero two.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you all. And so we will begin with our next discussion, and I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Grunwald to discuss the omnibus zoning uh, resolution that she's proposed. Commissioner Grunwald?
Yes, okay, thank you. So, okay, this is going to be a long discussion, I guess. Uh, I submitted, uh, I guess what you would call a tri-part resolution uh, dealing with three of the 24 uh, proposed omnibus zoning changes that were proposed by the um, Office of Planning. Uh, the resolution is titled Resolution Asking the D.C. Zoning Commission to Deny a Proposal to Change the Process for Front Setback Relief for Certain Properties and R and RF Zones. That's the first part. The second part is to deny a proposal to increase the size of accessory buildings in R Zones. And the third part is to approve side and rear setbacks for accessory buildings in R Zones. So uh, I assume that we should address these issues one by one. Uh, so I guess I will start with the first, um, the first one, which is uh, proposal number 15. And that has to do with front setback relief. And the Office of Planning is proposing to uh change how one gets permission to build and, and addition to an existing home or to build a new home on a non-standard lot closer or farther from the street. And they would like to uh, fro- from a hard-to-get variance to an easier special exception. So currently uh, all, all uh, houses or additions that wish to be closer to a street need to go through the variance process. And new houses, new construction that wish, wishes to go on, on conforming lots, which wish, wish to go closer to the street. They, they are under, currently under uh, the variance form of relief, and they will stay uh, under the uh, variance form of relief. The only uh, the only things that would be changing to special exception here uh, to build closer to the street would be in addition to an existing home or to build a new home on a non-standard lot. And this proposal would apply to all residential, uh, all residential R Zones and also RF Zones, rowhouse zones throughout the city. And um, all of Chevy Chase outside the uh, commercial and apartment district is owned R residential. And there are four tiny pockets of RF zone, uh, RF Zones along Upper Connecticut Avenue in Chevy Chase. I think two are in Peters District, two may be in Corinthius District. Um, so why, why does this seemingly minor proposal make a difference? Okay, the reason it matters is that the uh, easier approvals could move house facades forward on a block engendering, quote, "front setback creep" and altering the uniformed street wall over time. Once a new house or addition is allowed to move closer to a street, it becomes the new set point for any future houses or additions to follow. From that point thereon, all future houses or additions must be allowed by right to meet the new shortened distance to the street. Therefore, this proposal could dramatically change the look and character of our streets. Now, um, Bruce and I uh, took part, created a little survey that we sent to our constituents. We got a, a very good return. Maybe Bruce will want to talk about his, um, his. But I can tell you that um, I got a good response from mine. And people said, I think it was yeah, uh, 78% of the people I interviewed from my SMD um, are opposed to this. So I'm asking the ANC to uh, to, to go with that. If you'd like to discuss it, uh, uh, Bruce, do you have, would you like to report the results from your ANC?
Excuse me, um, Commissioner Grunwald, can you first put your motion on the floor, which would be your resolution?
Oh, sorry about that. Okay, I'm a newbie. Okay, so
You would say I move?
Yes, I am. I'm just getting my paper in order here. Okay. So I move that the uh, commission uh, adopt a resolution asking the D.C. Zoning Commission to deny a proposal to change the process for sent front setback relief for certain properties and R and RF Zones. Shall I continue with all the, the other two parts as well? Just that part? Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Now we're in discussion.
Okay, so would anybody like to, to ask me some questions? This is the most difficult of, of, of all these proposals to explain, so if you have any questions, please, please ask. I, I
Christopher Vane?
Um, yeah, thank you very much. Um, I, I think it's overly simplistic to um, describe one proposal as, or, or one method is easier and one is harder and base a decision on that alone, which seems to be what's motivating this, is the fear that if it's quote-unquote easier, that lots of these will be granted. As one of the zoning commissioners explained at Thursday's hearing, the standards or the factors that are considered are really different. That for a special exception, the BZA considers things like the effect on, on light and air to neighboring properties and community character. You know, exactly the kind of factors that we would want to be considered in whether to grant one of these things or not. Whereas the um, uh, the variance process focuses on whether it would be an unusual hardship to the property owner to um, uh, to, to, to be bound by, by the existing zoning. And I, it just seems to me that the exist, or, or that the proposal to use the special exception procedure actually considers the factors that, that we think are important to consider. So I would uh, urge the commission, uh, this commission not to oppose uh, the OP proposal. Thanks.
Uh, can I respond to that? Yeah, uh, so Joel, Joel Lawson of the Office of Planning would readily admit to you, I've had a, a big discussion with him, that uh getting, seeking and the, the, seeking a, in a special exception, the review process for a special exception and getting a special exception is much easier than a variance. You, you have to go under, undergo a much more rigorous process with a, with a variance. And I don't see, um, and my, my constituents don't see why someone, someone should not have to prove hardship. Why shouldn't, why should they be able to build? Why shouldn't why should they be able to build closer to the street? Just because they want to, they should have to prove that that there's a a real reason to do that. Because as one of my my constituents said here, uh, a uniformed street wall is is a large part of what gives a street cohesion and its look and feel. If someone wants to bust through the street wall, they should have to prove hardship, which is what they would have to prove under the variance process. The variance process is more stringent than the special exception process. And so the variance process is what should be used. It's what is currently used, and it's what is used for new construction. New construction on conforming lots that want to build closer to the street. They have to go under undergo the variance pro- through the variance process. Why should that be different for uh additions to houses or new homes on on non-standard lots?
So just just to um if anyone wants to respond to that, feel free. I was going to just make a comment about what I heard from my constituents, that's all. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't I not able to use my raise hand function for some reason. Um, in any event, um, I did a sounding again, um, had a lot of feedback from constituents. And um on on this particular issue, it's running uh about seventy-seven percent against. Um, I've heard from um a hundred and sixty-two of my constituents, a hundred and ninety uh Chevy Chase residents responded to my survey. But again, a hundred and sixty-two are from my single-member district, and seventy-seven percent of them are opposed to this. Um, so um I will be supporting the the resolution on this on this item.
And let me just um go at the top of the meeting. Um, in terms of meeting rules, uh, we stated we would hear from community first. So if there are any community members that want to speak on the resolution, um, just please use the raise your hand feature. If I don't see any, obviously, I'll go to commissioners. But I just want to make sure community members know that you have an opportunity to speak on this. Okay, seeing none, so I'll make a a comment, short and brief. Um, so I sent out um on the listserv as well as Chevy Chase Chatter and my email group, which has um several hundred emails on there. And yesterday, I think it was yesterday, I was texting you guys. I spent um a good deal amount of time on the street. Um, so I have a tendency to do that. And um talked to quite a few neighbors. Um, you know, most of them, just people that are living their everyday life, um, don't really have a lot of understanding of the whole zoning process. Um, but did get some feedback on um these issues, including the issue that commi- Commissioner Finacy had raised regarding the light pole. And um I would say definitely it was a hundred percent uh of the folks that I spoke with that were in agreement with the resolution. Um, and you know, I gave them the honest uh good, bad, ugly. I tried to be very transparent with pros and cons. Um, and uh, that is the honest feedback that I got from my constituents. So I'm going to be voting in support.
Okay, so anyone else? Um, Laura would uh Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I got him. Commissioner Goslin, Ben Finacy.
Yeah, I um I, first of all, um, commend uh Carol, Commissioner Grunwald, for the work she's done on this. Um, and for pushing this issue when we were re- this, there was a sort of pile-on of um of uh moves by OP and the zoning commission. Not only the omnibus with twenty-four different um items, but three other um zoning cases, making it very hard to sort out um which were the really important ones and which were not. That said, it seems to me that particularly on this issue, um, this is um much worry about not very much. In fact, the 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 substance of the this provision, not the process by which you get, it's it's handled by by the city, but the substance goes right to what I think we want, which is that it says that uh no um structure can be um can change the look and feel of 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 that that already exists for houses on the side of the block where there's a there's some sort of uh there's some sort of uh exception sought. So I will, I cannot support this. I I think that I I understand the um the responses that Commissioner Grunwald, Commissioner Sherman, the chair have gotten from their neighbors. Um, but it seems to me that this is one of these issues where, in fact, the substantive language of the of the zoning ordinance is the very thing that we want, which is to protect um the 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 character of our neighborhoods. And I so I think that people are always scared about change. Um, and this is a case where I just don't think there's a great danger. Thank you.
Commissioner Finacy?
Um, yes, I would just like to note that in most homes, right? Like, if you face the west, if somebody builds out towards the front, they might, they'll a block southern light, northern light, not such a problem, but southern light. If you face the south, then people could build out their bop in east and west morning and afternoon light. If you face the east, you're getting your south and north light. So they're again blocking southern light. And if you face north, they're blocking east and west morning light. So northeast, I'm sorry, southeast and west light are all really important. And there's no way to avoid at least one, if not two of those being blocked if somebody pushes the front out further. So I'm gonna vote in favor of Commissioner Grunwald's resolution. Thank you.
Any other commissioner discussion?
I would just like to add that um the Committee of One Hundred for the Federal City of they they uh they support my point of view and my my constituents' point of view. It's a an organization I really respect. And um they study zoning law, zoning regulations and laws. Uh, you know, really intensely and very deeply. They really care about this city. And uh for that reason, I I respect uh their opinion. Uh, and uh, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Well, and Commissioner Finacy, did you want to bring up your friendly amendment?
If now is a good time, um, Commissioner Gore, I would love to bring up my friendly amendment. Thank you. All right, so another one of the proposals that is in the text changes is to be able to install on any D.C. public school property or any D.C. um Department of Parks property, both of which lie in my uh single-member district, um, light poles up to ninety feet with no setback as a matter of right. Um, and I am going to disagree with that. Would you like me to share the resolution or just kind of?
Yes, can you um on your screen? Because I don't know if Commissioner Grunwald had a chance to look at that language.
Okay, let me um share it right now. Can you see this?
It's coming up.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So they have proposed a zoning text change to allow poles up to ninety feet without a explicit, without a one-to-one setback as a matter of right. And I see that I need to put that in there as a matter of right. So I have a number of concerns here. First, um, we have a public review concern. When things are done as a matter of right, that assumes that there's virtually no public um negative, right? That everything is a benefit. And that is absolutely not the case here. So public notice is a very central concern. Um, I was on the mayor's streetlight advisory panel where we looked at streetlights. And up before that, I was on the ANC Lighting Task Force. I've been dealing with lights for about ten years. And there are a number of concerns. Um, light poles, especially ninety feet tall, they're like the highway lights. They're most of the poles in this neighborhood are between forty-five and sixty feet. So even the tallest poles are, you know, you'd have to add three stories on top of that. So they're tremendously high. Um, and this is presumably to allow night events, which would create noise at night, as well as glare and perceptible intrusion into long-established residential areas. The American Medical Association, I'm just scrolling up a little bit, um, argued, and they they've been out here for about nine years now. I think it was twenty sixteen they came out, that the widespread use of LEDs because of the blue-white light, it disrupts the circadian rhythm, which suppresses your melatonin production, which leads to increases in prostate cancer, breast cancer, obesity, um, sleep deprivation, which has a whole nother host of health effects. And in fact, on one of the streets, which had very blue-white lights put on it in the green alleys in twenty fourteen, uh, one young mother developed breast cancer um a few years after those lights were installed. And she had absolutely zero risk factors, no genetics, no any behavioral risk factors, nothing. Only risk factor was those lights. Um, they're also detrimental to animals. And then I go into some of the comprehensive plan um conflicts. For example, um, park lighting should be compatible with adjacent residential neighborhoods. And they should carefully manage alterations to existing structures to be compatible with the general design, character, and scale. When we renovated Lafayette Elementary School, one of the suggestions that I had was to preserve play space by adding a third story to the school to give bigger playground area. And the Historic Preservation Office would not, the review board would not allow that because it would be out of character. So to say, "We can't have a third story on the school, but we could have ninety-foot poles," like, that doesn't match. Our homes are generally thirty, thirty-eight, maybe forty feet high. So you're talking three times the houses. We also have a comprehensive plan policy, which says to design parks, open spaces, and rec facilities to reflect preferences and culture of the local population. Until the school um construction in twenty fifteen, the Lafayette baseball field was signed, permitted, mapped um as Lafayette Park. It had signs on it, park closed at dark. Um, and then in repeated projects over the last decade, the city has respected and recognized the community's positions on there. I give citations um from twenty nineteen, two from twenty eighteen, another from twenty sixteen, and two from twenty fourteen. Um, the zoning text amendment also notes that uh DPR has standards for lighting. I've never seen them. When Joel Lawson from Office of Planning came to meet with us, he didn't have them. So we don't, they're not public. We don't know that they are necessarily in compliance with dark sky principles. We know that there's no DCMR, no regulations that provide maximum amounts for light spill trespass gla- glare or operations of light. Um, so and OP hasn't clarified how those DPR standards could be enforced. Um, we've also seen how city commitments have been broken in our neighborhood. Um, and I just cited one that um was related to lighting in the park because they said we would have downlit fixtures on the upper field. They've never done them. And then we've seen another um city reneging on its pledge on the streetlights, where they said, "Anyone that's finding the lights intrusive will be able to get shielding, request dimming." They closed out hundreds, literally hundreds, of three-run-one requests after the lighting rollout. And also um said that the lighting now needs to be measured with a new kind of light meter that registers registers the new LED lights as significantly less bright than perceived by the old meters and by the human eye. Um, and also, finally, the zoning commission honored uh the community's preference for no sport lighting at the private Barrett Field, um, leased by the Murray School. So I would ask that the ANC recommend that they remove matter-of-right sports lighting from the proposed text amendment. If we wanted to change that to technically have it matter-of-right sports lighting of ninety-foot poles, but I really think any sports lighting, because of the effects of light, should not be matter-of-right because it is so intrusive to a residential area. Thank you.
Let me go to Commissioner, well, let me deal with this um before Commissioner um Goslin. So Commissioner Grunwald, Commissioner Finacy offered this language as a friendly amendment to your resolution? Do you accept that?
Yeah, so uh that's what I have my hand up for. I uh Laura's uh resolution is beautiful. It's more beautiful than my resolution. And I'm wondering if if it, and it's longer too. And I'm just wondering if it should be part of this resolution, uh, which my resolution is fairly short, or whether it should be its own standalone resolution, since you're asking it actually to be removed from the proposed text amendments.
Yep.
I mean, it's a beautiful resolution, Laura.
Um, I'm happy to include it as a friendly amendment, and procedurally, that might be easier, but um.
Well, you've you've written, you've written the, you've written a resolution here. And it can stand alone. And it might be more impactful if you did it alone. Um, it's up to you. It's asking for something a little different than what my resolution's asking for, um, because you're asking to take it out of contention altogether. You know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I I just thought I would throw that out there.
So it's actually um Commissioner Grunwald. It's your call because it's your resolution and she's.
I I I think this is a beautiful resolution that uh uh Commissioner uh Finacy has written. And I think it should stand alone as its own beautiful uh resolution, be simply because um it's very well-written, but uh simply because it's asking for something a little bit different than than the the primary resolution.
Got it, okay.
That would be uh, that that's cool with everyone else.
Okay.
And I would like to address that point, too.
I am, I'm I'm gonna come to you, Commissioner Goslin, hang on. I just want to make sure Commissioner Finacy and Grunwald understand. So um Commissioner Finacy, do you understand what she's asking to have yours? So basically, what's occurred is she's not accepting the friendly amendment.
Oh, well. I I think um, I think I'm I'm gonna take it as that she she likes it and wants it to go forward. And the question is whether it should go forward with hers or alone. My concern would be in my tardiness in getting this um posted. Is it procedurally best for it to go as an amendment? I would go with whatever gets it in front of zoning.
You guys have to work it, I mean, I I need Commissioner Grunwald. And I understand, we all like what you wrote up. But the procedure is she's trying to amend the motion. And Commissioner Grunwald has to let us know if she wants her motion amended or not. And it's the maker of the motions' call.
I would prefer uh to keep my, to not amend it and not accept the friendly amendment in in but in good spirits so that that Laura can introduce it on her own. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you both. Okay, Commissioner Goslin.
I was worried that there was going to be a decision before I got to address the issue. I'm actually very pleased that we're dealing with these two issues and indeed the other issues in Carol's um uh omnibus um proposal separately. Because while I will oppose uh the frontage issue, I am happy to support this uh uh the the light pole uh matter. So I do hope that we keep it separate. And I I do think uh to Laura's point, ninety feet is one hell of a pole. Uh, and um so I'm happy to support it. And I think when we get to some of the other issues that uh in Carol's resolution, I'm happy to support. But if we combine it into a uh one mega resolution, I'm I'm gonna have to oppose. So and I will will oppose and then write a letter supporting the elements that I think I can support, so.
Let me go to um Kate. Kate Farms.
Thank you. Um, yes, so I think actually when I raised my hand, um, I actually, it was before the breast cancer and other health-related things, which I will um mention separately. But I have a background in the rim planning and um also um urban agriculture and landscaping and all this. And I fully support Laura in terms of there is no reason that there should be a ninety-foot pole providing light. And I'm a parent of Lafayette students. I'm helping with events at the school. And there are so many other ways to provide lighting for those events in specific just at the time of the event. And it does not need to be there all the time. And um I I I fully support that. And I think also in terms of when you're looking at, oh, well, not that the current administration cares about nature, but in terms of looking at pollinators and migratory birds and all of these other things, when you, when it comes to lighting, that actually is a big impact um as well. Um, and uh also, Laura, I would love to get your information about the uh health-related stuff because I. because I actually also have breast cancer and going on several years now. And I have always hated hated the new streetlights that are outside. I have zero risk factors and I raised my hand before I even knew about these health health effects. But I I would fully support Commissioner Finacy in terms of this being a separate. Well, I don't know if I can even do that, but I think that this is a big issue, the lighting in terms of how all of it is handled in the cities and on streets and at DPR or or school locations. And I I really do, like ninety feet would be taller than Lafayette. So I just, it doesn't make any sense to me why on earth you would even need that as a big supporter of the school and having students there and spending a lot of time there. I just, there's so many other ways that we could create lighting for the events that we need and then reduce it because it just, it just seems like it would be over engineered.
Thank you. Let me go to Commissioner Grunwald.
Yep, so do I still have to talk about Laura's resolution or Laura's stuff? I can still talk about mine? Okay, great. Just I'm going to make one last stab at trying to convince Peter of why this is important. And, you know, Peter, I just want to make sure that you understand that once a new house gets permission to build closer to the street, that all the other houses that, all the other new houses that come after that and every addition that comes after that can by right meet that new frontage, that new shortened distance to the street. You understand that, right? They have the right to do that.
But but Carol, I do understand that. But what the substantive standard in the zoning ordinance speaks to that issue. And it says that the no house can be moved further forward than the furthest forward house that exists on that block on that side. So as a substantive matter, the standard is exactly the one we want. And defend, in in not, what what's at issue here is what procedure should be used when somebody asks for some relief from that. And what I'm saying is that because this, I think the standard is adequate as it is. So that's the protection. I do not advocating for houses being moved forward willy nilly. I live in a neighborhood where all the houses in my block are on the, are are on the basically are in a row, a street front at a certain distance back. And I agree that it would make a huge difference if a house was moved way far forward. But look at the language of the of the substantive zoning.
No, I agree, that's not, I I know that's not changing. But what, but the current standard is a variance. They 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 want to change it from the current standard, which you said you approved. It's currently a variance that governs this. And a variance covers, also governs and will always govern new construction on on conforming lots, on standard lots that want to move closer to the street. So why should there be different categories? They should all be covered by, I think, it seems, it makes sense to me, that should all be covered by the same form of relief. Why should there be special form of relief for for new houses on non-conforming lots rather than new houses on conforming lots? Why should there be two standards for that? Why should there be two standards for people who want to build a big addition onto the front of their yard? Why should that be, you know, one standard and another for another? They should all be the same, right? So currently, everything is covered by variance and they just want to take these two, the addition, the homeowner addition, right? And and new houses on a on a non-standard lot and make those covered by special exception. That doesn't make sense to me. And I was just curious as to see how you react to that. I mean, shouldn't it be all the same, all the same method of relief?
Let me go to Commissioner Nagy. Commissioner Goslin, if you want to respond, raise your hand. Okay, Commissioner Nagy.
I was going to to cede my my raising of my hand to let Commissioner Goslin respond. I I went to the hearing. I testified actually on the front yard setback. I think I heard Joe Lawson say that this proposal will allow people to push beyond where the property, where they are now. So that the the street, the the house that's further, farthest most close to the street, that's terrible sentence, I apologize, doesn't set the bar. This is specifically to allow people to push beyond that. So I'm going to vote in favor of Commissioner Grunwald's resolution. And I'm already on record as being in favor of, in opposition to the streetscope, streetscape provision. And I testified on that matter as a personal testimony.
Commissioner Goslin?
Just to respond very briefly, I understand the position both Carol and Liz are taking.
Excuse me.
I think I just, just a slight correction, which is that I don't think that Lawson says it will allow people to move forward. It 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 relieves them of a cumbersome process. They get a decision more quickly and they get a decision at lower cost. But it is not encouraging, it's not changing the substantive standard. So it's just a process question. It's how requests for relief of some sort are are handled. So and so I don't, enough said, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion commissioners or we want to take a vote?
That's fine with me, vote.
Any more, okay. So commissioners, the vote is on Commissioner Grunwald's resolution. And I have all of you on my screen so I can see you. Commissioners, Commissioner Grunwald, yes.
Yeah, I just want to make clear what you're voting for. We're voting for a resolution that's asking the DC zoning commission to deny a proposal. So to change the process for setback, okay. Right?
Taking them one at a time or you doing the whole?
No, 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 I'm just, no, we're doing one at a time. But I'm just saying, so everyone's clear as to what we're voting on, yes or yea or nay. We're voting, the resolution is asking the DC zoning commission to deny a proposal. So when you vote in favor of it, you're voting to deny a proposal.
Right, what I want to understand though, I thought, I just want to be clear. You have three, so you're do, are we voting on your one resolution? Because normally we vote on the whole kit and caboodle. Or do you want us to vote on each individual segment?
I think it would be interesting to vote on each individual segment. What do you think? I've never, I've never done a tripart thing before, so this is new.
But you're, okay, so you have, but you have one resolution, right?
Yeah.
So we would vote on the resolution itself.
Yeah, I guess. I mean, I I'd originally thought of doing three separate resolutions for these, but.
No, you can put it in one, yeah. I mean, the way you have it written and worded is fine.
Okay. So do you want us just to continue, do you want me to continue on with the other?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so the second part of this resolution is asking the DC zoning commission to deny a proposal to increase the size of accessory buildings in our zones. Okay, so as I said, Commissioner Sherman and I, we both sent out a nice survey of people in our districts. And this was a closer, a closer vote. But I have forty seven percent of my respondents saying that they do not want to increase the size of accessory, accessory units. Now let me just give you a little background here first, please. Okay, so the the Office of Planning, okay, is proposing to increase the maximum footprint for accessory buildings in our zones. That's residential zones, that includes Chevy Chase. They want to increase the maximum footprint for accessory buildings in our zones from the current four hundred and fifty square feet to six hundred square feet. And in the RF zones, which are in four little pockets on either side of Upper Connecticut Avenue, from the current four hundred and fifty square feet to five hundred and fifty square feet. Now, let me just say that since accessory buildings can be twenty two feet tall or in two stories, the total size of accessory buildings will therefore, if if this proposal is enacted by the zoning commission, will therefore increase to twelve hundred square feet in the R zone and and eleven hundred square feet in the RF zone. So that is basically, so 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 everyone understands how this is arrived at. If the footprint is going to be increased to six hundred square feet in the R zone and you can do that on two stories, you just double that and you get twelve hundred square feet. Okay, so the Office's planning is not only asking to increase the footprint, they're asking, proposing to increase the size, the ultimate size of these buildings. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone in who was watching here understands that accessory buildings also include accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as ADUs. They're a type of accessory building. So the proposal applies to ADUs as well as buildings like garages. And who was affected? Well, the proposal applies to all, as I said, all R zoned properties, residential properties and also the RF zone, which is the rowhouse zone on on Upper Connecticut Avenue, portions of Upper Connecticut Avenue. And and why it matters, okay? So increasing the footprint and therefore the size of accessory buildings will allow homeowners and developers to fit fit more inside them. They can put more stairs, more storage, more parking inside these secondary buildings. But as, but larger accessory buildings may also impact the light, air and privacy of neighboring properties. And so since accessory buildings are permitted to be twenty two feet tall in two stories, they can be quite large. Let's see, what else, what can I, can I tell you? Oh, yes, let me just, a little additional background. A footprint, just so people have an idea, a footprint of six hundred square feet is equal to a thirty foot by twenty foot building. A twenty, a thirty, a thirty foot by twenty foot building. But since accessory buildings can be twenty two feet tall, this equates to two thirty by twenty foot buildings, one on top of the other. So people can get a kind of a picture in their minds of how large that is. And ADUs, accessory dwelling units, can legally be used for long term as well as short term and vacation rentals, including Airbnb in the district. And I just would like to also note that the committee of one hundred opposes this proposal. So thank you. That's my introduction for that.
Commissioners, any questions?
Commissioner Sherman may wish to discuss what the survey results were in his, in his SMD.
Again, just quickly, a hundred and ninety people responded to the survey, a hundred and sixty two from my single member district. And on this, there's a majority that are opposed to this. It's fifty one to forty two percent opposed. Let me just comment on one thing. When I became commissioner, elected in twenty twenty two and took my seat in twenty twenty three, I actually thought that coming in, the issue that would consume most of my time would be the Murray Fields project. Much to my surprise, it was the Twin Towers on Thirtieth Street. I had more calls, more concerns, more complaints about the construction of those two homes than any other issue. And it went on for months and months and months. I did several community, two different community Zoom calls. The first with the Department of Buildings officials to answer constituent questions and comments about how in the world these could have been approved. And there were seventy people on that call, seventy neighbors. I was, I was stunned. We subsequently had a call with the developer, Ty Wu Demaran, and his architect to walk through the plans. And at that time, the rear additions, meaning the accessory dwelling units on top of a garage on each of the properties had not been built. Once those went in, there was another round of outrage from neighbors. And it was vociferous. And so it's not just a survey that I fielded now and hearing from people now. And I again acknowledge and out of total respect for those in the community, my constituents who favor increasing the size of ADUs. And as I say, forty two percent of those who responded did favor them. But the majority do not. And I think that the experience one has from neighbors who have witnessed this, who have seen the reduction in light, seen the reduction in privacy. It is something that certainly stays with ones, has stayed with me in terms of the level of concern. So I will be supporting the resolution that Commissioner Grunwald has has offered.
Anybody else? Okay, so then I will go on to the next item, which is I've got to keep all my papers straight here. Okay, the last portion of my tripart resolution deals with accessory building side and rear setbacks in our zones. And our zones are, again, are the residential zones here in Chevy Chase. Now, the Office of Planning's proposal would introduce a three foot minimum setback from the side and rear lot lines that are shared with a neighbor. I just want to let everybody know that currently zoning regulations allow accessory buildings to be constructed directly on a property line shared with a neighbor. And so that that has posed a great deal of problems for people. Having accessory buildings built directly on a property line makes it impossible for the owner of the accessory building to paint or otherwise maintain an accessory building without actually having to trespass on his neighbor's property. And also having these buildings built directly on the property line really takes away from the privacy and the light and air of the neighboring properties. So I would just like to say that in my district, people were very adamant that we have substantial setbacks for these accessory buildings. And yes, like almost sixty percent of my respondents in my, in my SMD said they definitely want setbacks. Many of them felt that the three foot setbacks that were being proposed by the Office of Planning were not nearly deep enough, wide enough, big enough, whatever would you want to use? And they would like to see larger spaces between these accessory buildings and neighboring properties. Some people mentioned even up to ten feet, some people mentioned five feet, some people mentioned eight feet. A lot of people thought that three feet would not be adequate, but nearly everyone said that they would like to have space around these, you know, setbacks around these accessory buildings.
Rebecca Maydak?
Yes, I'd just like to say I have firsthand experience with this. There's a big ADU that went on behind my house. And I just had this big conversation this week because it's like six inches off the lot line. The builder told the guys putting the siding in that they can come two to four feet into my property to put the siding up. I tried to explain to them that that's not correct, they can't trespass on my property. I eventually let them come on my property because they would just do it when I wasn't home anyway. But it's ridiculous, like Carol said, even if they need to repair or fix something, they have to be on my property to do it. And there's a fence, so they were putting everything up on my property to go up to the the second floor and the first floor. They couldn't even do the first floor. It's so close because the fence is there. But even without the fence, they'd be on my property to do any maintenance or anything. But I'm a little concerned that the builder's telling them they can, they have a right to come two to four feet into neighboring's property. And you know, the builder knows better. But, you know, it's ridiculous because now anytime they do anything, they're going to be on my property. That's all I want to say.
Yep.
I just want to add, this was another one that was concerning to the folks that I spoke to in my SMD. And personally, and I had asked you previously, Carol, I don't know if you would consider a friendly amendment on the setback because I believe that three feet is, I I just think it's too close. I would like to see a setback of, you know, at least five feet. So I don't know if you would be willing to do a friendly amendment in your resolution for that.
Yes, I would, yes.
Thank you. Mary Ralph?
Yes, Lisa, I agree with you. I would like to propose eight.
I would like to propose eight feet, isn't that what we currently have now for setbacks on side yard lines?
For houses, yes.
So I also have firsthand experience of this, you know, in two cases on the side and in the rear of my property. And Carol, are you saying that right now that somebody could, with this proposal, they could actually, they would have to build in three feet? Because I know that they can build right on the property line for an alley. So it's just, it's just three feet on the side, isn't that what they're talking about?
Well, okay, so for an alley, the seven-point-five minimum setback from the center line of an alley will remain in force. So depending on how wide or narrow your alley is, you may or may not be required to have a setback. But it would be very small, you know, if you did have a setback because it's seven and a half feet from the, you know, the middle of the alley going back. And most people, most people have alleys that are at least fifteen feet wide, right?
Right, I do, I have a fifteen-foot alley. And so seven and a half feet is right on the property line. But it used to be longer than that, and they cut it short, I think in sixteen. But are you saying, though, that the, you're talking not only just about a three-foot on the side, but I thought you also mentioned a three-foot from the rear?
Yeah, well, that's what OP originally proposed, a three-foot setback on the side and a five-foot setback in the rear. And they amended that to make it three feet on the side and three feet in the rear.
If you don't have, if your alley isn't fifteen feet?
No, 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 this is to an adjoining, to an abutting property owner.
So if somebody doesn't have an alley, if they don't have an alley, that applies?
I'm talking about, if you have a neighbor, you have an adjoining neighbor, okay? You have to have three feet in, they have to, they have to build three feet away from your, the side of your property and the rear of your property. If you're, it depends on where your adjacent neighbor is, if he's to your side or to your rear.
Right, but these are for people who don't have alleys behind their properties?
Yeah, if they're abutting their neighbor in the rear, okay? Then they are required, they would be required to have three feet from the accessory building to the neighbor's property.
Yeah, so I would also say that I agree that it's just impossible to maintain properties when there's smack on the property line, and most people have fences nowadays. So it's just, it's impossible to do anything with a building right up smack against a fence. So I support, you know, what you're doing there. I would recommend that you, you know, don't accept what the zoning commission is proposing, but instead come up with a different number.
Commissioner Finacy?
I have a question I would like to ask for a friendly amendment for cases where the rear of a property is against the side of someone else's yard. And I'm gonna try to hold up some paper so you can just see, okay? Like some, I don't know, maybe you can't see this, black and white together? I got my virtual Andrea Mitchell background, okay? But let's just, yeah. So let's say that the, you know, because right now, they can build an ADU up to the rear. And most people's rear yards face other people's rear yards, sometimes with an alley in between, sometimes not. But in cases where a rear yard abuts directly on a side yard, right? My side yard, I have to have an eight-foot setback. I can't go any closer to my neighbors than eight feet. And my neighbor who faces the same, you know, whose front door faces the same way, he can't get any closer than eight feet from the property line to me, right? So we've got sixteen feet of space between our two houses. Well, that person who has the rear yard abutting my side yard, they can go right up to the fence line now.
That's true.
And that's not okay. Why should, why should a building be able to go right up to my fence line if the purpose of a setback is to keep people able to access all areas on the side of their house for maintenance, for security, for storing bikes, you know, for having a potting shed, whatever they're doing, right? If they, but it also provides light, and it provides some privacy. And if they put their building right on, you know, they could just look straight into my bathroom window, it's crazy. So I would like to propose that the friendly amendment asks that in cases where a house's rear yard abuts a neighbor's side yard, then that house's rear yard have an eight-foot setback, even for an ADU. Because right now, if they wanted to build on their main house, they would have a twenty-five-foot setback. But an ADU can go right up to the property line, and that makes, that makes no sense from the property owner's kind of living quality of life.
Right, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Grunwald?
Yeah, I'd like to read, just to show the effect that some of these very large accessory buildings have on neighbors. We received a communication today, the ANC received it, and it's from someone, and I'd like to read it. It says, "I support the introduction of setbacks from side and rear lot lines shared with a neighbor. However, I advocate for a wider-than-three-foot minimum setback from side rear lot lines shared with a neighbor, given that the minimum setback between freestanding, single-family houses is generally eight feet. Three feet actually allow space for maintenance of and light and privacy from a twenty-two-foot build, twenty-two-foot-tall building. A now-deceased Chevy Chase resident lived next door to people who put up two accessory buildings, at least one of them two stories, in their backyard. The two-story structure was close up to the back of my acquaintance's house and, of course, snug with her property line. It ruined her experience of her backyard, and it reduced the light and views in the rooms along one side of her house as well as outdoors. She asked my husband to take photos of the situation because she thought she might pursue a political or a legal remedy. But then she decided that while her comfort at home was much diminished, fighting her neighbors and the city would consume what was left of her life. And of course, she was an elderly person, and she passed away." This person continues to write, "I'm skeptical that a three-foot setback over none is great enough to make an experiential difference for those who share a property line." Thank you.
Mr. Goslin?
Yeah, I want to say that I'm, I thought at the beginning of this discussion that things were gonna go really well, and we were gonna deal with each of these proposals separately in Carol's resolution. I must say, this is something where I could very much support it as I can with the Commissioner Finacy's proposal about light poles. And if I have to oppose the full resolution, I will write a letter indicating my support for this element of the resolution.
Ron Khan?
There we go, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to have you pay attention to the actual wording that's used in this item where it just says accessory, it doesn't say ADU. So I think this applies both to a one-story garage as well as a two-story ADU. I'm really looking at the wording, and there's some differences, even though they may be talking about the same thing, that you have to be careful about in how they're writing each of these items. So I think this also applies to a one-story garage. And I don't know if that matters to you all or not. I do agree you need more clearance on the side yards, but I'm just saying we need to pay more attention to the exact wording and phrasing that they use. The other thing is, this is the only item where you have the BZA comments on. It's always BZA cases that they're referring to. So this has a number of people, the Building Commission and others, that are recommending this for some reason, and it's one of their stronger felt items. So I just want to draw the attention to that, okay?
Thank you, Ron.
Any other discussion on this? Commissioner Grunwald, did you, given Commissioner Goslin's comment, did you want to go back to your original idea and vote on all three separate?
Yeah, I think that might be a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, so how do we do this now?
Okay, so we're gonna go, you actually have a motion on the floor, and we'll clarify that the motion is for proposal number fifteen, front setback relief. And then after we vote on that one, we'll just take each one, and then we'll come back to Commissioner Finacy's light pole.
Okay, so we're gonna start with rear setback relief, okay? Okay, so does everyone want a three-foot setback, or a five-foot setback, or an eight-foot setback? Is anyone going to make any motions regarding that?
Commissioner Nagy, then Sherman?
Thank you, I have a question for the record, actually. We're actually starting with the last one now? Is that right?
Well.
We're starting with rear setback rather than with the streetscape?
I think that's what Lisa said.
I just need to know for the notes.
Yeah, you can, however you want to do it, Commissioner Grunwald, we could start whichever one you want.
Okay.
There's a discussion on the rear, so if you want to go with that one first, we can do.
All right, so no one has any, no one has any adjustments to make or comments to make about the size of a setback?
Your hand is raised, Commissioner.
Except for Laura, yeah.
Could I just clarify, I think what, Carol, I think what you were asking is that you heard in the discussion, people saying, I thought Lisa was offering a friendly amendment that would have increased the setback requirements. Were you pursuing that with her?
Yes, I said that I would be.
That's right, that's what I thought you were, yeah.
I would be open to that, but I haven't heard any sizes.
Absolutely, absolutely. So Lisa, I mean, if you're gonna make a friendly amendment, I mean, I could support that too. And or I could support, I could support an eight-foot or five-foot with some sort of screening of trees required, any of those things. But I think it's fair to get straight what we're voting on. And again, this is an area where I think more setbacks are well-advised.
So my friendly amendment was for three feet, but.
Three feet, it is three feet.
It was five feet, but I am also, I just, you know, I just think that we do need a setback larger than three. Five, eight feet is, I will definitely support. Commissioner Finacy?
Sorry, I just wanted to, as we talk about the setback, mine was just in that particular case of one rear facing one side, and make sure that gets in there.
Okay, Commissioner Nagy, then Sherman, I'm sorry.
If I could suggest, if we make the setback eight feet, that addresses Commissioner Finacy's concern, it addresses Commissioner Core's concern. It takes in all of that, it just makes it a straight eight feet, whichever direction you're coming from.
Commissioner Sherman?
I'm on board with that.
So that would be my friendly amendment, we make it eight feet all around. I'm gonna, I'm gonna second Lisa's friendly amendment there. I know that's not a real thing.
Yeah. Okay, so that one's eight feet. So Commissioner Grunwald, you want to put a motion on?
So if there's support for that, if there's support for that, is there general, generally support for that? Then I would like to move that we, we, let's see here. I need to add all these things here. So I move that we approve side and rear setbacks for accessory buildings in R-zones to eight feet, as an eight-feet setback. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so can anyone second that, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Sure. Commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hands. Seven, zero.
Wait, that's great. Okay, seven, zero on the setbacks, okay. Okay, so then why don't we move to proposal sixteen, which is larger accessory buildings? So I move that we, hold on, please. I move that we deny a proposal to increase the size of accessory buildings in R-zones. Do I have a second?
Can you repeat that, please?
I, I, I move that our ANC denied OP's proposal to increase the size of accessory buildings in the R-zones.
Sorry, I didn't hear that at all.
Okay, do I have a second? Thank you, and so how shall we proceed?
Commissioners, it's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Extinctions? Motion carries five, one, one.
My hand was for opposed.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Commissioner.
My hand was for opposed.
Okay, five, two, zero.
Okay, all right, and then the last one, which is really the first one. I move that we ask the D.C. zoning commission to deny a proposal to change the process for front setback relief for certain properties in the R and RF zones. Do I have a second?
Second.
And so how shall we vote?
Commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed?
That's, my hand is down.
Yeah, I was in here, I said, okay. Hang on one minute, Commissioner. All those opposed? Extinctions? Motion carries five, two, zero.
Great, thank you, everyone, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. In this section, we'll come back to now Commissioner Finacy's draft resolution. And I agree, Commissioner Finacy, you really all have, only thing you have to do is put that on letterhead and put the signature blocks at the bottom, and it's worded perfectly. Do you want to move your light pole resolution?
Yes, unless there's anyone who wants to ask further questions or offer a friendly amendment before we go on.
I just have a small technical correction, but that doesn't.
What's your technical correction?
At the very end of the draft that you have, it's the Board of Zoning Adjustment, not the Zoning Commission, in that last bullet point.
Perfect, I'll change it right now.
And the Murray Barrett Fields are not leased any longer, Murray owns that property now.
All right, so let me, and then owned by the Murray School, okay. All right, I did have one question. My resolution says now that the ANC recommends the Board of Zoning Adjustment per Commissioner Sherman's technical correction, remove matter-of-right sports light poles without setbacks from the proposed tax amendments.
Yeah.
All right.
So Commissioner, can you move it, make a motion, put your motion on the floor?
Okay.
You can just say, I move that the commission adopt.
Okay, sorry, I just need to write that in here for my cheat sheet. I move that the commission adopt my resolution, which asks that the ANC recommends the Board of Zoning Adjustment to remove the matter-of-right sports light poles without setbacks from the proposed tax amendments.
My second. Any further discussion, commissioners, community? Okay, seeing none, commissioners, all those in favor, raise your hand. Seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. Great, thank you, everybody. And I know this has been a long meeting, but the final agenda item that we have is just an announcement on the discussion of the DDOT's strategic bikeway plan. I don't know if community members are aware, but DDOT has a strategic bike lane, bikeways plan, that is a five-year plan for network bike lanes across the city. And I just wanted to make sure that the community was aware of the upcoming wards. And, um, I just wanted to make sure that the community was aware of the upcoming Ward's Three and Ward's Four meetings relating to that. ANC's didn't get noticed, which is actually very odd. We didn't get notice in three, four G, I don't know if other ANC's were noticed of it, but normally when DDOT is doing anything with, um, you know, uh, safety projects or plans in our area, they alert us to their meetings, and we did not get a meeting. So I was actually notified by one of, um, my neighbors, my constituents, so thank you, Lee, for sending that to me. But these are public workshops, and they are going to discuss basically the network bike pathway plan for your particular ward. So whether that's adding pathways, maybe subtracting pathways, um, just the whole discussion into that. And I know that is an issue for our community, so I wanna just make sure that, you know, we do our due diligence and make sure that you guys are aware. Hopefully, we can get some commissioners to attend. The Ward Four workshop is right around the corner. It's this Thursday from six to eight P.M., and it's gonna be at Raymond Recreation Center, and it is in-person. And I'll try to copy and paste this information into the chat before, um, we sign off. And additionally, I will send an email, um, and make sure that it's in the listserv and Chevy Chase chatter. The Ward Three Public Workshop is on Wednesday, December ten, and that's from six to eight P.M., and that's gonna be at UDC, um, 4,000 Connecticut Avenue. So just wanted to make sure the community is aware of that. Okay, thank you, Mary. I see your comment. Thank you. All right, commissioner announcements, Commissioner Sherman?
Well, just on the, uh, the bikeways, strategic bikeways plan, I will be going on Thursday night, um, to participate and, uh, hear what's on the mind of DDOT. I, I do hope that we have, and I know we will ask for, I'm sure, more direct involvement on the ANC level than simply to attend a two-hour general public meeting that will have lots of questions and probably limited time to provide feedback. So, but I will be going, and I, I put it in my newsletter that went out yesterday to members of my community, so hopefully we'll have attendance from, from folks here. But thank you for bringing this up.
Yeah, no problem, thank you. Okay, so, um, commissioners, I'm assuming we're in, uh, announcements? Commissioner Goslin?
Yeah, thanks. At our meeting on October sixth, there was a discussion of the management of the contract for a new website to replace our failing one, in which, uh, that included mention of Commissioner Bruce Sherman's wife, Jane Sherman. As has been true of many of our ANC exchanges recently, the discussion grew acrimonious and ended with a not altogether fully-supported decision that I would resume oversight of that contract, which I started with, um, in 2024. Well, I think the website, the contract, and its management are important issues for this commission. Uh, I think reducing, uh, the, uh, I think reducing acrimony among this group of commissioners and the public is more important. In hopes of contributing in some small way to this more important goal, I met with Bruce Sherman today. I agreed to apologize to Jane Sherman for any embarrassment or distress mentioned of her at the October sixth meeting caused, and I do so now. I also told Bruce that I would not resume oversight of the website contract, but instead leave it in his hands. He and the full ANC will have to decide the path forward with this effort from here. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons?
Hi, yes, I have two, um, updates. So the first update is that the sewer rehabilitation project in the SMD and Chevy, greater Chevy Chase neighborhood is coming close to a close, coming close to an end. I don't have the actual date when the project will be done in the neighborhood, but I know, at least for my single-member district, it's wrapping up. And then the last comment I have is, thank you to DDOT, we had a drain damaged, um, last week, and they came out and fixed it pretty fast, so just wanted to say thank you for remediating that damage drain that was dangerous.
Commissioner Sherman?
Yeah, first of all, I, I want to, uh, uh, thank Commissioner Goslin. We did have a nice conversation earlier today. I appreciate the apology and certainly accept that on my wife's behalf, so I, I thank you very much for that. We can discuss separately, the commissioners don't have to do it now, uh, further work on the website. There is, uh, after the contract work itself was done, there's substantial, as I've indicated before, updating of the site, but it's something we can, we can talk about separately. But again, uh, thank you, Commissioner Goslin. I appreciate it.
Um, and I just have a small, Commissioner Nagy, did you have your hand raised?
I did, um, only because I thought I saw an email from Commissioner Simmons about needing to vote on a report tonight, or was that-
We're not, we're not there yet. Yes, um, just a small-
It sounds like you were wrapping up, but I just didn't wanna miss that.
Okay, no, we're, we're, we're gonna get there. Um, just a small announcement for myself regarding the Oregon Avenue and Chestnut Street walkthrough that I held in conjunction with DDOT, NPD, Womata, Friends of Bus, um, and community members in SMD oh-one, and I think, um, a couple other SMD's community members showed up. So I just wanted to thank everyone that came out. It was tremendously good. We had a very good discussion. I wanna give a lot of kudos to DDOT. Also, Councilmember Louis George's staff was there, WarforMoker's staff was there, and, um, it was just a really great time, and we had a great discussion about safety along Oregon Avenue speeding, um, Chestnut Street as well. So there's gonna be more to come on that, and I'll definitely be coming back to the ANC on some ideas that my community members have. Good thing about that is some of them want to, um, work on our Transportation Committee, so at some point I'll be bringing that up. But it was a, a really good, I think, effort between, um, government, ANC, and community, and we stood out there for probably almost two hours. We just had a really good time and came up with some really good solutions for the community. So I just wanna thank everybody for coming out, and I'll be sending, um, some email updates to the community on that. Thank you all. Commissioner Nagy?
Thank you. I, I just, before we leave the chat, there, there's a, um, an item by Brian Hellman that this Thursday OP is presenting to ANC three E, the zoning plans for Wisconsin Avenue, the development framework. So, um, he writes, "Parents and students at Deal or Jackson Reed or at Sidwell who may have an interest in the plans to go up to a hundred and ten feet in Tenley Town." The meeting is, uh, there's a link in the chat for registering for the meeting to participate.
Great, thank you. Any more announcements, commissioners? Okay, so Commission Business Treasurers Report, Commissioner Simmons?
Um, yeah, so I resent our, um, quarterly report for Q four. So, um, I would like to make a motion that we move to approve the ANC three, four G quarterly report for, um, for Q four for fiscal year twenty-five.
Is there a second? Um, Commissioner Simmons, did anything change on the report? It was the same as the original one you sent?
Yeah, it's the same. I just re-forwarded the email from October. I included, we don't need to vote on this, but, um, for the meeting minutes, I included the October monthly reports. The October monthly report that shows the, um, transactions for the month of October, but on the quarterly reports, everything that happened in the quarter shows up on that.
Got it. Commissioners, any discussion on that? Okay, um, commissioners, all those in favor of approving the fourth quarter quarterly report, raise your hand. Seven, zero, thank you. All right.
And, um, the, the only thing before we go with the Treasurers Report, I just asked in the minutes that the October court, monthly report was provided to the commission, we don't have to vote on it, but it was provided for awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, um, so I listed in the, um, Commission Business Agenda possible items for our next meeting, which would be on November twenty-fourth. I won't read those out, but if you have any agenda items, please shoot them forward. I'm gonna try to get the agenda started immediately, and I will send you guys the link to that so we can add as we go. And with that, the time is nine twelve. I adjourn. Thank you all, commissioners and community members, for a great meeting tonight. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Great job.
Thanks, all.
It is tough. Good night.